We have noise.
Noise is good.
... yesterday, or swelling yesterday.
Hey, welcome back. Hey, Phil.
You are looking slim and you're even wearing pink shoes.
No, you didn't get... If you didn't throw up.
So you did get the...
You didn't get food poisoning.
No, I didn't get food poisoning. How are you feeling? Good. You look bright eyed. Looks like you're bright eyed and ready to go. Yeah.
It's never boring around here.
No.
I know.
Not for long.
You missed us.
It's boring, it's just temporary.
Whatever else it is, it's certainly not boring.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you'd please stand and join me for the flag salute. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I present the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This morning, we're very pleased to have Youth Commissioner Chairperson Janice Lehman. I'm sorry, I just went out of wrong order there. We'll start with the right one here. This is actually going to be presented by Lisa Strongen, who's the Chair of the Mental Health Board. She's going to introduce Judge Roper. Lisa, thank you for being here this morning.
This is certainly a lot better than standing in front of a jury. You guys look a little friendlier. At least at the outset. It's my pleasure to actually introduce Judge Roper to talk to you about our Mental Health Court. As you know, this program isn't new to California, but it was fairly new to Tulare County. And it takes someone like Judge Roper, who has the ability to see that justice, in order to meet it out fairly, cannot always just be one size fits all. And we've had a lot of success with our Mental Health Court. It has really addressed the need that certainly people in my occupation were seeing, that there were frequently folks who ended up, from our community, who ended up incarcerated. Yes, because they might have committed a criminal act, but we're not being well cared for by our probation needs and our court needs that were essentially designed with the more criminally sophisticated in mind. And these folks were people with mental health issues that directly impacted their ability to remain law-abiding citizens. And so with a very well-designed coordination between mental health and probation and the court system, we have a program that can identify these folks, get them out of the usual justice mill, as it were, and divert them to a program that really sees them as individuals with specific needs that can be specifically and appropriately addressed. And we've seen a lot of successes with that. But I don't want to steal Judge Roper's thunder, so without any further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Judge Glenn Roper.
Welcome, Judge Roper. No stranger to our chambers. Always a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you. I know I was here just a couple of weeks ago, but I promise you, this will be my last presentation unless someone asks me to come back and talk again.
And no doubt they will.
I have to admit, I thought last time you guys were ignoring all these slides that I did because you weren't looking at them. I didn't realize. You were seeing what I was presenting here, so I feel so much better about preparing all these slides. I want to talk about our Mental Health Court. And to do that, let me give you a little bit of background, which I think will help you understand kind of what the need for this is. In 1960, there were half a million people in inpatient mental health treatment facilities in the nation. Over the next 30 years, a lot of changes happened. There were some insurance requirements that put pressure on outpatient or to get people into outpatient treatment. There were improvements in outpatient mental health care. The cost of inpatient care, of course, kept going up. New medications were found to be much more effective in dealing with or helping people with mental illnesses. And I think a lot better understanding of what mental illness really is and how to treat it. In addition, there was a federal case in 1972 that said that inpatient patients could no longer be forced to work without being paid. And they had done a lot of the work in the hospitals. All that combined to reduce the number of people in inpatient mental hospitals down to about 100,000 30 years later in 1989. In some ways, that was good because it gave a lot of people more opportunity to participate in society. It was a less restrictive environment, released people from the overcrowded and inadequate conditions that were present in a lot of the mental hospitals. You've probably heard some of the horror stories that are there. There were a lot of bad things that were going on in some of the worst mental hospitals. At the same time, I think it caused some harm. A lot of people that previously had stability in the mental hospitals were simply kicked out onto the street. And they became homeless, had nowhere to go. Because they commit offenses, they don't see society the same way as we would like them to see it. They commit offenses. And a lot of them got arrested over and over again and ended up in jail and prison. Jail and prison is not well-suited to deal with people who have mental illnesses. In fact, you're going to meet somebody in a few minutes that I think had 11 cases in one year. And that typically is what happened. The police know the people well. Police don't know how to deal with them if they have a mental illness. And so it just caused a lot of problems. In fact, this article came out last year, talked about Rikers Island in New York. And the lady wrote that 28% of the inmates at that facility, that penal facility, required mental health services, a number that rises each year. I assume, I don't know for that, in that same statistic, but there's a lot of people, and I'm sure the sheriff, I could tell you that, there's a lot of people in the jail who are mentally ill and need mental health treatment and just aren't getting it. People with a mental illness. This study happened to be out of Massachusetts. And it showed that they have a 28% likelihood of being arrested in any particular year. If they're between the ages of 18 and 25, it's a 50% likelihood. Again, they just commit offenses. They cause problems in society. And they're very likely to be arrested. If they're arrested once, they have a 40% likelihood they're going to be arrested again in the next year. And 60% of them qualify clinically as substance abusers. I did not know about suicide until I started doing some research for a program that we did in May. 90% of people who die by suicide have a mental illness or are substance abusers, which really isn't a surprise. That seems just on the face of it to make sense. And of course, if they get adequate mental health care, then that is one of the best ways to prevent people from committing suicide. What I didn't know is that suicide is the leading cause of death in the jail. And it's the third leading cause of death in prisons. Those statistics really surprised me. I was not aware of that. Nine to 14 times more likely that someone in jail is going to commit suicide than in the general population. And half of them occur in the first 24 hours that they are incarcerated. Interestingly, if people are put into isolation or segregation, that increases the likelihood that they're going to commit or attempt suicide. Now, people that have severe mental illnesses are most likely to be put into those situations because they do not deal well in the general population. And so that increases the likelihood that people with mental illness are going to commit suicide in custody. These are just some of the headlines I pulled off the internet. When people commit suicide in jail, it's very expensive. And it's very likely that a suicide in the jail facility is going to result in lawsuits against the sheriff and the county. I've been a judge for 21 years. And I will tell you that it has been very frustrating trying to deal with people with mental illness. We see lots of people coming through, and we recognize that they have some sort of mental illness. We're not well-equipped to deal with it. Most judges know very little about mental illness. But we know that when someone has a mental illness, it doesn't make sense to treat them the same way as we treat other people that have criminal offenses. I cannot tell you how many hundreds, and I say hundreds of times, I've had people come before me when the attorneys come in and say, "This person's, something's wrong with this person. He's got some sort of mental illness." And yet he also, he or she, has a drug offense, a substance abuse. And so we have tried, I have tried, to send them to addiction treatment only to have them come back a short time later with the report, "We can't deal with this person because the mental illness is so significant. You've got to deal with that first." I then turn around, send them to some sort of mental illness treatment, only to have them come back saying, "We can't deal with them because they have this addiction problem, and they're using drugs, and we can't deal with them until they've been clean and sober at least 90 days." They're not going to get clean and sober for 90 days because they're not getting any sort of treatment. And that has happened over and over and over again in my career. Very frustrating. So what does a judge do if someone that has a significant mental illness comes before them? It's possible we can send them to a state mental institution only if they are so severely impaired that they're incompetent to stand trial. And that's a very thin layer of people. There's also a great frustration. I've read this recently, as Will's experienced it, where judges across the state are saying, "Wait a minute. We sent somebody to the state mental facilities. We may find out six or eight months later, they're still in the county jail because there isn't room for them in the mental facilities there." We might send them to jail or prison. That is very unsatisfying because we know that incarceration increases symptoms of mental illness. And they're very likely to stand at the cell screaming all day or bang their head against the wall or all the other things that people do when their mental illness is unchecked and they're placed in an incarceration facility. We try and refer them to mental health facilities. I'm sure the mental health people here cry to you all the time that they're not adequately funded. And I'm sure that's true. There just isn't adequate funding publicly in most places to deal with people adequately. Sometimes, we let them go. If the crimes are of low enough seriousness that we view it as more fair to simply let them go than to incarcerate them or try and do something else, sometimes we do that. All of those are very problematic answers to this problem and very unsatisfying because we know they're going to return with new charges. It just, that happens. If you put somebody that's mentally ill out on the street without treatment, they just come back over and over and over again. It just seems to get worse and worse. So several years ago, we heard about the concept of mental health courts, which are specifically set up to deal with people with serious and persistent mental illness. Ours was formed in 2008 as a collaboration between the district attorney, the public defender, the probation department, the mental health department, the court and law enforcement, chiefly the sheriff's office. Lisa said it was well-thought-out, and it was. I tell you, we spent a lot of time trying to analyze and figure out exactly how we're going to do it. Now, that doesn't mean we haven't gotten better. We've tweaked it and tweaked it as we've gone. But I think we had a very good program initially. This is just a flow chart. You can see any of the people in the yellow can refer people to the Mental Health Court. The district attorney determines eligibility. And we have a set of criteria that's been agreed to as to whether they're eligible or not. If they're not eligible, they proceed to the regular criminal system. If they are eligible, then they are referred for suitability. The mental health department determines whether they're suitable or not. And we've actually gotten much better, I think, in figuring out who is suitable and who isn't. It has to be a serious and persistent mental illness that is treatable. If they're not suitable, they plead guilty, and they're just sentenced under the standard rules. If they are suitable, then they fill out the probation terms. They come to me. I sentence them into the Mental Health Court, and they're sent to treatment. If they successfully complete it, then ultimately, the plea can be withdrawn and the case is dismissed. If they're not successful in completing the program, then again, they're sentenced under the standard criminal guidelines. These are just some of the criteria that are set up that we agreed to with the district attorney. Obviously, we don't want serious sex offenders. Have to be statutorily eligible for probation. So if they have a strike, that would preclude them. We don't want people that have caused substantial or significant injuries to others. They have to live in Tulare County. They have to be willing to participate. And they have to be, well, I'm sorry. This is suitability criteria. The mental health department, as I said, determines whether they're suitable or not. They have to be medical-eligible because that's the chief way that this is funded, through medical funds. And they have to meet medical necessity and be viewed as amenable to treatment. It's a three-phase program. I'll just quickly flip through this. First phase, they come to court a lot. Every week or every other week, they are seen a lot by the probation department and by mental health. The mental health treatment is provided to them frequently. Phase two, the only real change is that they get less contact by the probation department. They should have been stable by the time they get to phase two, at least six months down the road. They're seen less frequently by the probation officer. And they come to court once a month. The mental health treatment would probably be about the same. By the time they've been in a year, they're eligible to go to phase three. They may have no probation contact for months at a time, as long as they're doing well. And they've come to court once a month to see how they're doing. The mental health treatment would be basically the same. They would then graduate at that point in time. They have to, they have at least six months of sobriety. They have to have regular and consistent participation in their mental health treatment and agree to continue with that. They have to be taking medication. I'll tell you, I was not a big fan of psychotropic medications before I got in here. But I have seen how much those medications have helped people. They're difficult because when they first start taking them, the negative side effects are high and the benefits are low. Somewhere, two to three months down the line is where they cross. And then the benefits kick in in a substantial way, and the negative side effects attenuate. But until that cross happens, it's really difficult for people because they don't feel any better and they feel worse because of the side effects. So a big part of what we do is to help them through that difficult process and continue with their medication. We want them involved in some sort of community activity so they're not just sitting around. That may be going to school, some other training program, participation in community service or volunteer work, something so they're doing something productive and not just sitting around the house. They have to agree to continue participating in the mental health treatment. And as a team, we would all have to agree that they are ready to graduate. After graduation, we have a three-month after-care program. Basically, they'd only come to court after three months unless something happens in the interim. And as long as they continue to do what they're doing, they seem to remain engaged in the treatment. And at that point in time, the plea is withdrawn and the case is dismissed. When we first talked about this, this was a couple of years ago, Supervisor Cox, I think, quite appropriately said, "How are you going to pay for all this?" He and I are, I'll tell you, in the same wavelength. I do not want to build something that's going to fall apart the first time a grant goes down. And so our determination was that we would use existing resources and marshal them in a more effective and efficient manner. And I'm proud to tell you, I think that's exactly what we've done. We haven't used a lot of extra resources. We've used what we had. And I think we are doing a much better job. Fact of the matter is that we in the county are going to see these people one way or the other. And I think the way that we're seeing them is much more effective in helping them and in helping society. Some of the principles that we use. Number one, this is a reward-based system. As I told you when I talked about the drug court. I firmly believe that people respond to rewards, and that's what modifies behavior. These are some of the awards that we have given them or rewards. Nothing there costs very much money. Oral praise is a lot of what they get when they come to court. And I try and praise them for every step forward, even though it may be a very baby step. We've given a few other tangible items, which don't cost very much but have a great meaning to them. We even had, on certain occasions, some more significant items. We had a young lady who liked to sew. And somehow, we came across a little electric sewing machine. And we gave her that when she was making great progress. And she uses it and sews with it. And is actually taking a sewing class. So we use rewards every time we can. We use punishment only when it seems like awards are being ineffective. That could be something as simple as a writing assignment or community service hours. We restrict them at times when they go out and do things they aren't supposed to do. And only when nothing else seems to work do we use jail. And that is a last resort and as rarely as we possibly can, recognizing that jail is an expensive sanction. Sanctions have to be appropriate. This is a metaphor, by the way. We wouldn't really put people in a stop. But people with mental illness don't respond well to social pressure. And so things that might be useful in the criminal setting are likely not useful in helping people modify their behavior in the Mental Health Court. Sometimes, writing assignments are appropriate. We've got one lady who writes reams of paper on a weekly basis and sends us 30 or 40 pages of just writing. Some of it's gibberish. So a lot of it's telling us what she wants to do. Obviously, a writing assignment would not be viewed as a punishment for her. So we try and use punishments or sanctions that are appropriate. We have an expectation of improvement, but we recognize that it's going to be slow. And that's exactly what we've seen. A lot of people make a lot of progress, but it's baby steps along the way. And we recognize that. We reward them every time they do something that is appropriate, though the reward, as I said, might be nothing more than me giving them oral pats on the back. We are tolerant to resistant attitudes. A lot of times, they are very resistant. We recognize that. We work with it. We don't fight against that. We try and help them roll with it and continue to make progress. Our goal is to keep them as long as they're making progress and moving towards graduation. And only at such a point as they no longer are making progress do we determine we're wasting our time and move them out. And that happens very rarely. Housing has been a big help to a lot of people. A lot of these people are, quite frankly, homeless on the street. And once we get them in a stable housing, get them adequate nutrition, get them cleaned up, they seem to make great progress. We have seen greatly reduced drug usage. A lot of these people, as I said, are using once or twice a day. And they may have relapses once every few months, which is a whole lot better than what they were doing on the street. We've seen a tremendous increase in hygiene. A lot of times, they just don't know how to stay clean. And we have hygiene class that we send them to. We've improved relationships with a lot of family members. Some of these people haven't seen their family members for years and years. Once they get stable, we put them in touch with family members. And that's been very heartening to see that. A lot of people are in school. Now, again, they have a hard time in school because they don't see things the same way as a lot of the other students. But several of them are making real progress toward their completion of their high school education and further. Compliance with medications, I've already talked about, is one of the huge things that we've seen that benefits them. Happily, most of the clients stay engaged in it. They like it. They feel better about themselves. And we've seen them do a whole lot better in functioning in society. And some of them, we've seen what I would just consider super-improvement. And you're going to meet someone in just a second who I think has made some real super-improvement. This was several months ago when I put this slide together. But, and we have a few more people since then. But at the time, we had 37 participants that had come in. Four had opted out and chosen to go do their time. But 33 were continuing. They had a total of 8,780 prior jail days before they got into the mental health treatment and 295 arrests. At the time we looked at this in May, they had eight total new arrests and 200 jail days, a whole lot better than what they had been doing. And most of those jail days were the people that opted out and said, "We don't want to do it anymore." And so the sanction days were very small compared to what people had been spending in prison, or excuse me, in jail. 24 of them had done so well that they hadn't had to be placed in jail at all. We have reduced admissions to the psychiatric hospital by 92% among these people. That also is a huge savings, I think, and a huge benefit to society. Some of the concerns that we have, the need is a whole lot greater than the capacity. Because we haven't gone out Because we haven't gone out and tried to get a whole bunch of new resources, our capacity is limited. We figured out actually ways to increase the capacity with what we have and so I think we've got at present twenty-two people in Phase One, thirteen people in Phase Two and eleven in Phase Three, which is greater than what we thought our capacity was going to be. We've graduated one young man, Supervisor Vanderpool was there. I'll tell you, it was a heartwarming experience. This young man was, tried to be in the drug court and just washed out, he simply could not do it and went to jail. He was invited into the mental health court when we first started it. He had mutilated himself, really was doing poorly. I'm pleased to say he is now attending Porterville College, got his high school education complete and is doing very, very well. We plan six additional graduations in February and four more in March if everything goes well. So, I feel like we're making some real progress and seeing people improve their lives greatly. Some clients have opted out, there's just nothing we can do about that. It's a voluntary program. I hate to see them go but sometimes they just choose not to do it. One of the things we've learned is that people with antisocial or Axis II disorders just don't do well and we're doing much better at screening those people out upfront rather than letting them in and washing them out. People with Axis One, schizophrenia, paranoia, severe depression, bipolar, those people have done very well and that's kind of the target population. Okay, as I said, I want to introduce you to somebody that I think is going to be much more effective than I am at showing you the benefit of the Mental Health Court. Nigel was well-known to the police here in Visalia, had at least eleven cases that we're aware of and quite frankly, at the very beginning, when Nigel was invited in, some people, I'm happy to say I wasn't one of them, said, "He's just too severely impaired, we can't deal with him." We massaged that around and agreed to let him in and Nigel has done exceptionally well. So, let me introduce you to Nigel and have you just talk if you would please for a minute about your experience?
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Judge Roper for inviting me here to this meeting. Since I've been in mental health court, I've got reenactment with my family and I've been doing what I got eight months clean. And, it's not give and take, kind of like I gotta give some or take some. I plan to be graduating in January and I'm reenacting with my daughter, my daughter's graduate from drop court in January also, so I probably need to move one up there and that's all I got.
Well, thank you for being here Nigel, appreciate your coming.
As I said, going from eleven arrests in a year to none is a big improvement. Last thing I want to say is, again, I'm very grateful to your employees who have helped with this. This is a collaborative effort. I think that people have stepped up and really focused your resources and they are much more effective in helping these people than anything that we've tried in the past. And a lot of these people are here that are part of the team and I'm very proud to be part of that team. I think it's been very satisfying to see what we've accomplished. Any questions that you'd have for me or anybody?
I'm sure there will be questions. I just wanted to say thank you for being here Judge Roper and this is a very exciting program to me. I, you know, we often, I'm something of a skeptic, oftentimes we hear about, well, you know, an investment of a dollar here saves a hundred over here. We hear that all the time and sometimes I'm not so sure I concur with those statements. But I can see where a program like this would be extremely cost-effective. The avoidance of incarceration costs, of rest and detention and prosecution and defense and probation, the replacement of this with a system like this is, would be very cost-effective. Not to mention the public, I mean, the safety and the protection of the individuals who are a danger to themselves as much they are a danger to society. The one thing I was going to ask you about is, because the thing I've always heard about, one of the difficulties when people are outpatient is this medication compliance. And I wonder if you could just speak to that. It would seem like your program would offer, at least while they're under your umbrella, a way of sort of assuring that that compliance continues. I wonder if you might just talk about that briefly?
And that's what we do. The probation officer goes out, is Chris here? Chris Oliver, I'll tell you, you have a jewel of an employee there. She's with the probation department and she just does a super job. I think she goes far above and beyond anything that we would expect from her. And a big part of what she does is go out and help people understand the importance of medication and assure that they are complying with it. She tracks their medication, a lot of times the medication is actually administered by personnel but if they are living at home away from a residential facility, then she helps them understand that and tracks and makes sure that they take their medications they're supposed to. Our hope is that once they move out of here and graduate on, that they will feel so well and understand the need for medication that they will continue with it.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderpool?
As the board's representative on the Mental Health Board, I've really had the opportunity to engrain myself in the Mental Health Court and in the mental health system here in Tulare County and I just first want to thank you Judge Roper for your commitment to the mental health population in Tulare County especially through the Mental Health Court. It really takes innovation and dedication and commitment to do what you have to do and I've seen you at work in the Mental Health Court and seen your patients and seen your willingness to understand and work with this population and to really help them. And I think that's what you're about and that's what I know all the staff is about is helping these people. And so, I'm very, very grateful to the staff and very, very grateful to you for all the work that you do to help these people recover from the illnesses that they suffer from. This isn't a program that's, you know, just an alternative punishment. You actually try to help improve these people's lives and you help society by making these people active and positive contributors to our society and I'm very grateful for that and I'm very grateful to the staff and the dedication that they show to this population that really does need this help. And I've seen Nigel and I believe the graduate's name was, was it Daniel?
Matt.
Matt, Matt, okay. And I saw Matt graduate and that was really a great event because at that event, it wasn't so much, you know, a high school graduation, you know, I'm through, I'm done, you know, done with what I've gone through for four years. At the mental health graduation, it was, you know, wow, I've graduated to a new phase in my life. I've improved from what I was and here's a new me and I feel like I'm equipped with the tools to go on and be productive in my life. And so, I really saw that and that's a great feeling and I'm sure glad to see that you've got about ten slated graduates in this coming year, I guess in 2011. And it's just going to really be great to see the continued progress of the Mental Health Court and the mental health system here in Tulare County and I do hope that we're able to continue to use existing resources to expand this program. Because like Supervisor Cox is always good at mentioning, "How are we going to pay for this?" You know, I hope we do find ways to continue to pay for this and continue to expand it because I think it's having a great impact on this population that really needs it. So, I'd like to give you a round of applause to you for the Mental Health Court and to the Mental Health staff, all the cooperative staff through all the different departments that are involved because I think you guys are doing great work, being very innovative and working really hard. So, round of applause for you.
Thank you, that means a lot to us. Although, I'll tell you, they say the best job you can have is find something you like to do and find somebody to pay you to do it and I think that's where I'm at.
If I can, real briefly, I've known Judge Roper for quite some time now. Your success in the drug court precedes you so, and your enthusiasm for the work that you have also is very contagious. You know, a car does not drive itself and I'm convinced that you could take any vehicle across this country and back without a dollar bill in your pocket. But it really does take the right person to do something like this Judge and you're the right person, so thank you.
But the extension court is very expensive. Thank you.
I also like to thank your efforts and I especially like to thank Ms. Strawn for cheering this board for all these years. And I remember when I sat on the board, we had some issues about training of police officers on how to handle some of the cases they had with people that had mental illness issues. And it's taken a long time but this is absolutely a very positive step, the whole process. And I know the board, there's a lot of people that sit on that board that spend a lot of their time and I'd like to thank them personally for actually getting us to this point with your help of having a mental health court, so thank you very much.
Mr. Ennis?
Yeah, I would also like to praise you Judge and the many people that work to make this program work and go forward. I know when you first started this a couple of years ago, I mean, talking to you, a little bit skeptical of it to start with and then I think the results started to happen and now it's really going forward and all the results you've had with the drug court, with the graduation coming up this month in that, you've done an excellent job and again, congratulations to you for your hard work and to our probation people and the people at Health Human Services that work every day in these different departments. So, thank you very much for all your-
They certainly did great work, for sure.
Thank you Judge. Thank you for all that you've been here this morning. Thanks again for our special guest this morning. Thank you for coming and speaking with us. You're free to go if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to stay. We're going to go to the public comment period at this time. Anyone wishing to address the board during public comment period are invited to come forward and give us your name and address. During public comment period, we will listen to your concerns regarding things within our jurisdiction but are not on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to come forward this time, please do so.
Chairman and members of the board, good morning. Tim Huntley, County Human Resources Director. I'm here this morning to tell you about the success that we feel the health fair that we conducted a week ago Thursday resulted in. We had had seven hundred people at the first health fair, we had nine hundred at the second health fair. At this fair, we had fifteen hundred bags of giveaways which were gone by one o'clock in the afternoon. So, we had a really tremendous process. But one of the things that I had talked to this board about and the board approved the expenditure of money from the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority for two programs. One for onsite mammographies for women forty years of age and older who are county employees and then also a program of biometric testing and health risk assessments for which we set aside fifty thousand dollars from the SJVIA Claims Mitigation Program. It turns out that as a result of the fair and subsequent steps that have been taken by individuals expressing an interest in participating in the mammography program and this being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'm pleased to announce that we have over two hundred and fifty people who have signed up and would like to participate in the program. We've only funded for a hundred slots and so, I would be planning to come back to you at your next meeting when I can get on the agenda officially to propose that we use some of the money that's been set aside for the biometric testing to increase the capacity for the mammography program. Now, that will require us to have the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority approve the change of the program. However, in the event that they do not or in the event that we still need the full fifty thousand dollars for the health risk assessment, there is another source of funds and that is the CSAC subsidy funds. When we were a member of the CSAC Excess Insurance Authority, we were the recipient of monies as a county that was paid by non-county entities such as cities such as the city of Visalia that we could use for health-related programs. When we left the EIA at the end of 2009, they also simultaneously canceled that program but we do have a balance of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in there of which we are requesting this morning, by the way, Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five, that we use twenty thousand dollars of that to continue with the debit program for the Section 125 Medical Reimbursement Plan. But if all other things fail and we either need the money for the health risk assessment or if the SJVIA does not approve the change, I would be coming back to you in two weeks with the option to pay for the additional breast cancer examinations from this San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority Subsidy Fund. But I consider the fact that there is this level of interest absolutely positive on the part of all the efforts that the county's been making on its health and wellness program. Didn't qualify to get it on the agenda because we only got the listing of people that signed up as of Monday but unless there are questions, that's kind of the direction we're heading.
I don't have any questions but I just got one comment. Of course, we know that as a direct result of our utilization rates for our health insurance, our premiums went up significantly this last year in comparison to our partner in the enterprise of Fresno County and so, these efforts at prevention are so very important if we're going to really be able to control our insurance costs in the future and so, this is a great program, the whole wellness program is something that, you know, this board fully supports because we really want a healthy workforce and those who are able to avoid the need for costly medical care because they've acted proactively. So, thank you very much Tim for all your work and your staff's work in this regard, it's very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Fike, I was very impressed with the fair this year. It seemed like there were more, obviously more people, more booths, more information. There were areas where you couldn't get to because they were two and three people deep so I think it was very well put on and I still feel bad that you beat me at bowling or whoever beat me but-
Well, there always are the small tragedies.
It was a great event. It was a great event. I think the fifteen hundred bags, I think I saw Supervisor Worthy here take two so-
We already had our bags, remember? They gave them to us that morning.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, you know, I also, you know, echo what everybody said. I mean, the key time we can keep people aware of their health, you know, a lot of times the only time we start worrying about our health is when we get a bad case of the flu or something comes along. So, if you're thinking about your health every day and trying to be proactive, you're going to live a whole lot longer and a whole lot healthier, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks want to address their own public comment? Not, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board for board comments. Supervisor Matters, I'll begin on my right, Mr. Ennis this morning.
Okay. Had the pleasure of attending the last 4H breakfast at our old fairgrounds Saturday morning and we served well over two thousand people out there. So, 4H is alive and well in the Porterville area. That same evening, I attended the Porterville FFA Boosters and we had a big turnout for that and that's another good program that anytime people are involved in 4H and FFA, you don't have to worry about them being involved in gangs. So, these were two great events. And then Sunday, I attended the Los Rubles, Los Madrenas Guild which is Valley Children's Hospital fundraiser up at Indian Oaks Ranch, that's Larry and Jody Young up in the Springville area, had a big turnout there and I think they were hoping to raise between twenty and forty thousand dollars for Valley Children's Hospital. Next Tuesday night, a week from tonight, is going to be our Gang Summit in the Terabella-Ducor Ridge Grove area. We're very pleased with the participation and everybody involved in that. That'll be starting at five o'clock on the nineteenth at Carl Smith Middle School in Terabella and looking forward to a good turnout, we're hoping for about a thousand people there. This afternoon, I'll be having a meeting in the Doyle Colony area with Alta Vista School and Doyle School to try to work on some safer routes to school for those folks out there and we'll see how that goes forward. So, that's all I have this morning.
Very good. Mr. Shida?
Last week, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Council of Governments Policy Committee Meeting in Modesto and it was an excellent meeting. We talked about transit, how there's a lot of money being directed at transit, there has been for many years, but it doesn't quite fit the San Joaquin Valley. It may fit some of our major incorporated cities but it doesn't fit the rest of our rural communities and we're looking at seeing how we can split off some of that money from transit into maybe road repair or improving our roads. The conversation was briefly touched on about forming a one COG for the entire eight counties in the valley and what I mean by that is all eight counties would only, would have one council of governments represent the whole valley and it appears even from outside people, that doesn't quite work right because you have the northern counties such as Stanislaus, San Joaquin and Merced that have a lot of commuter residents that commute to the Bay Area for their jobs and then we take from Madera South. We pretty much stay within our own counties that we work in. Then you take Kern, Kern is a little different animal from the other three counties. So, we'll have further conversations on that. One of the issues that arose was that maybe the San Joaquin Valley Policy Committee should take on other issues that affect the San Joaquin Valley and one that's probably going to be discussed at our next meeting is water because water is such a critical part of the eight counties in the San Joaquin Valley that we may take a position on water. Last week, I was also informed that the Tulare County LAFCO which Supervisor Worthy, Supervisor Ennis and I serve on, received the California State LAFCO Association Award for the Most Effective Commission for Handling Environmental Justice. And this came about because of the public hearings that we had, meetings we had on the annexation of the industrial track in Tulare next to the Metheny Residential Track. And it's not very often that we are nominated by the California Rural Legal Assistance Incorporated for any honors, so it was a complete surprise to the commission because the commission did not nominate itself. So, I don't know if it'll ever get in the newspaper but it was a surprising award.
Thank you, Mr. Shida. Mr. Cox?
Last week, attended the Reese for Kids fundraiser here in Visalia Thursday evening. The event was very well attended. Jean Russo showed up for a while and had a good time. A lot of funds were raised for organizations that provide activities for youth throughout Tulare County. It was a very, very good event. Boys and Girls Club was a huge recipient of funds this year and they provide services, I believe, in three of our districts. Last, I'll make it short, went to my thirty-five-year Mount Whitney High School reunion this Saturday and realized I must have been about eight years old when I graduated because all those people look so much older than me.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderpool?
Well, on the subject of the high school reunions, I'm looking to my tenth, I'm looking forward to my tenth year high school reunion in a couple of years, so that'll be exciting for me. Another comment I'd like to make about Tulare is this past weekend, Tulare had their Relay for Life event. It was a great event, they had a great turnout, there were a lot of people there and it was, you know, for me, since cancer hit so close to home in my life, it was a very moving experience and I just really need to see the community rally together for this cause and to really show support for fighting cancer and finding a cure. So, that was really very moving to be there and it was a great, great turnout. Last night, I attended a joint meeting between the COS Board of Trustees, the Tulare City Council and the Tulare Joint Union High School District Board. They had a meeting in Tulare at Mission Oak High School talking about all their budgets and all their situations, cooperation on the new COS campus in Tulare. You know, budget talks are all pretty much the same and everyone is dealing with layoffs and holding vacancies and- and holding vacancies and using reserves and everything to meet their budget challenges. And the one common theme between all three organizations was Sacramento. And it just shows how much we all rely upon Sacramento. And when they continue to have their problems and issues up there with funding, we all continue to suffer. Some good news that came out of it, the COS construction of the Tulare campus is all on schedule. That's going to be scheduled to open in 2013, and the construction's about 20% complete, and they're looking to meet that 2013 target to open. And then, the last thing I'll mention, since I'm the chairman of the Tulare County Association of Governments, is that COS students voted on a nine-to-one basis to pass an assessment on their own fees so that they could all receive a T-Pass, which would allow them to ride any of the Tulare County area transit buses to commute to school and get to school. And that's been a very, it's a very effective system for the kids that currently utilize it. And for all the students to be able to have access is really a great thing. And I think we're going to see a big increase in the use of the Tulare County area transit system with that increased assessment. So, I just wanted to pass that news on, and very exciting, and look forward to seeing the positive impacts of it.
Just to piggyback on that, the other thing is it will enable people to go to school that right now have trouble because for attending junior colleges, there are no, there is no bus services. So, this ability to use our transit systems in the cities, not in the county, is going to be very, very helpful to folks. And I think I did hear you had a 20th reunion, I believe it was your preschool. Just a couple of things. I was, I went, we had a CSAC Executive Committee gathering last, last week, and which I attended briefly. One of the things that was very interesting was there was a report from the CSAC Finance Corporation about our utilization of U.S. communities purchasing. And this is an opportunity where counties can piggyback their purchases on contracts that have been gone out to competitive bidding across the nation and take advantage of those bargains that someone may have negotiated back in North Carolina, and we get the same benefit out here in California. What was amazing to me was that all 58 counties of California participated in this program. Number five on the list, Tulare County, ahead of Fresno County, right behind Orange County. In other words, from a per capita standpoint, we are the biggest user of that. And that means we're using our money efficiently, effectively, and getting the biggest bang for our buck. And so, I thought that was just a good, good piece of information for us. One thing I asked Gene to look into in the budget that was approved by the state last week, one of the positives for local government has to do with the SB 90 mandates where, going back to 2004, the state owes various counties and other small, it can be cities, CSDs, and different types of government organizations, back money for unfunded mandates. For Tulare County, that amounts to $2,178,000, money that we didn't expect to see coming this year. We do have to cover some of the cost of the issuance of the bonds. We don't have to pay for the interest. The interest will be borne by the state. So, there'll be a small haircut to the county. But let me tell you, this is, the one and a half is worth two in the Bush situation. This money, we don't know when we would see this money. So, being able to see it this year during difficult times is very, very helpful to us. And I'm appreciative of that part of the state budget. So, I don't know, Gene, if you want to add anything to that or not. Anyway, that's some good news for us. So, we'll move on at this time. I know we have a timed item, but before we take that, I would like to take our consent calendar so that we can allow the people to get under their way. And Item Number 31 is off calendar, off the agenda today. Is there anything else any individual members wish to handle separately?
I would like to just pull Item Number 16 with a question on that.
All right, 16.
Mr. Chair, not to pull anything, just want to point, Item 12, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about selling off surplus properties. We're authorizing today our purchasing agent to, I would say, eliminate properties, including real properties, real estate with a value of under $25,000. And it's a huge step. Don't need to pull it, just want to note that as a highlight. That's a, I think that's a very important step for this board to take.
Very good. Any other motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Thank you. Take up Item 16.
On Item Number 16, I just had a question for Dr. Dirks. And I've been, I've been contacted by several constituents with concerns regarding alternative services. And that basically is the system that deals with constituents who get DUIs. And I just wanted to pull this item just because I am contacted with questions and really ask about the effectiveness of this organization and the services they provide. I know that, you know, these constituents that get DUIs, I mean, they, obviously, they, there's a punishment and they have to learn. But is this program really effective in helping those offenders learn to not do it again and give them the resources to really change their ways? So, I, I wanted to pull that and just ask about outside providers and just see what other options that were available to us and have you comment on that?
I can respond to that, Supervisor, in a couple of ways. First, the contractual relationship we have with alternative services in this case is strictly an administrative contract. Services such as those provided by alternative services, first of all, they're the sole provider in the county. That is a, an arrangement typically taken up between a provider such as that and the court. The department does not engage in any kind of evaluative process because we are not the sole treatment provider in this case. It's merely a, again, an administrative cost that we are allowed via our relationship with the Department of Alcohol and Drug to collect. So, I guess that's a circuitous way to respond to your question by saying, we don't engage in any kind of evaluative process here. It's merely an administrative cost that we recoup.
Perfect. Well, thank you. That answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other motion?
With that, I'll move for approval of the item. Second.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous in support. Motion passes, and we'll go back to our 9:30 timed item, public hearing requests from the Fire Department to approve fire hazard abatement cost recovery. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Delman. I am a fire inspector with Tulare County Fire. Tulare County Fire is requesting the board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's costs plus administrative fees came to a total of $16,030.13 for the cleanup of 11 parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such costs on the county tax roll as special assessments. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, parcel analysis. The contractor's cost came to a total of $13,159.13. The administrative fees came to $2,871. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions?
Just noticed our repeat offenders aren't listed, probably coming at a different time.
No, actually, we're doing very, are you talking about?
Yes, I am.
Yes. If I have, if I can have a moment, they have been so proactive in that area, and we've been working a lot in that community. And I've been going to the school, actually, passing out flyers, putting up posters there at the local market, talking to a lot of the locals. And they have been really proactive at actually cleaning their parcels. So, I'm really impressed with what they've been doing, the work they've been doing there, and praising them and letting them know. And they have been able to see that fires have decreased in their area, which is awesome for that area. Because throughout history, as we've seen, it has had to been abated by the county and plus the suppression fees that have went into that area for engines to respond. So, it has been a great victory for us and for the community to see that they're safe in their area. And so, it's been great. It's been awesome.
Well, kudos to your department for taking that initiative because that's, that is very important to us.
On that note, since Mr. Cox brought it up, I, I just would ask, you know, I know resources are limited and there's only one of you. But, you know, is there any way, I mean, there are those repeat offenders and people that are consistently not maintaining their property throughout the county in various different communities. Is there any way that we can kind of continue with that proactive outreach to these various communities and posting posters and going to the school and getting in front of these parents and telling them, hey, please take care of your properties? Not only will that help to beautify the county, but it'll also help to keep the residents of the various communities safe.
Absolutely.
So, I thought that would be something that if we can do, that'd be great.
Yeah, that is something that personally, like you said, I am the one that covers the entire county for hazard abatement. But throughout, taking care of the public education, doing inspections on the hotels, motels, I am spreading the word. I take flyers, posters, brochures. I educate them as I'm out in the communities, talking to the children. While I'm out even doing hazard abatement, I'm speaking to the children about fire safety. I speak to their parents about hazard abatement. So, I do believe, my passion is, is to help people. And so, that's the thing. So, yes, what you're talking about is what I'm out doing. I'm being really proactive, getting our engine companies out in their communities to talk about that. I send out emails to the stations in regards to fire safety messages. So, they can post them on their bulletin boards. They can make copies, take them to events, take them to schools, take them to different women's clubs, the Girl Scouts, wherever we can get those. Schools are actually making copies of those and sending them home with the children. So, for me, I've just tried to think of different ways to touch the community, get involved in the community. So, even though I'm a one-man show, I'm trying to get the word out there. And I actually see that fires are decreasing in the county, which is awesome for us. It's awesome for the neighbors. It's making them feel safe, and it's also helping them to know that we do care. So, for me, it's an awesome thing to be able to be out in these areas. I love my job. I love what I do. And so, hopefully, it shows throughout the community.
Well, we appreciate it, and for a one-woman show, you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, this is a public, any other comments before I open the public hearing? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this matter would be, come forward now and give us your name and address. Seeing hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for board action.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Shida. Please cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Go and continue doing good work.
Thank you so much, sir. And you have a great day.
Thank you for being a good ambassador for the county, too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
And with that, we will go to Item Number 34, untimed items. And this is a request from the Board Supervisor to approve the Tulare County Youth Commission's Administration of the Junior High School Service Learning Program. And at this time, I'd like to call on Youth Commission Chairwoman Janice Layman to present the agenda item posted this morning.
Good morning, Janice. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. I know there's something in the Bible that says, "The last shall be first," so I guess I, commission me, and here I am. First of all, before I even talk about this, I just wanted to say that I'm also on the Mental Health Board. And one of the reasons that I stay in Tulare County and that I'm proud to have been born here and spent most of my life here are some of the exciting programs that are happening in the county. I think the Mental Health Board is, you know, has, has been, you know, involved in that. But to have all those agencies working together to, to help people who would otherwise be incarcerated and would cost all of us a lot of money, not to mention just that loss of human potential, I think is really something that we should feel good about. And what I'm here today to talk about is something that I also think we should feel good about. This is resulting from our service learning program that we've been administering the grants for the past three years. And we've served a total of 18 schools. And one of the things that has come up from people in the community and also from board members, from Youth Commission members, is the fact that, wouldn't it be great to be able to put some of these monies to work with younger children? Unfortunately, I know all of you are aware of the fact that many of the decisions that, that young people are making that get them into trouble are being made at a very young age. So, we feel that anything that can happen to get that, that will help this money get to even younger students is going to be very, very positive. So, what, what we are looking at is that we are going to have one grant for the amount of $4,000 available in each supervisory district, and that the grants will be available to schools on November the 29th, and the projects will be awarded by the board in February, and projects will begin on March the 1st and run through the school year. Most of our service learning projects have been, have been held during the summer. But we felt that with the younger youth, it was important and probably be easier for them to, to have that happen during the school year. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I just have one, one comment. I'm really glad to see the Youth Commission doing this and targeting younger kids because we all know that the gang problems start much earlier than high school. And the more and more we can continue to get involved with younger and younger kids, I think the more results that we're going to see. So, I'm sure glad to see that we, the Youth Commission is bringing this forward, and I'm sure glad that the, the Board of Supervisors and CAO's office have found funding to make this possible. Because I think this is another aspect of prevention that can really go a long ways. And so, thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for your passion in helping impact lives, whether it's the youth or the, the mental health population of Tulare County. I know you're very involved and active, and, and we appreciate what you do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janice. Any other questions, comments?
You know, not a question, but also a vote of gratitude for the Youth Commission, the hard work they do. They receive literally dozens of applications, and it takes a lot of time to weed through those and read those and make the tough decisions. We appreciate those tough decisions that you do make as a Youth Commission. They spread them out, and you read seven or eight each. And so, it becomes a very difficult thing to do. Also, Jeff Forbes, our staff, the staff's that is very, very organized and has this thing down to a science, so.
He does, indeed.
Thank you for your dedication, Jan, and willing to take this on because this is another big piece of work for you guys.
Okay. We need a motion?
I'd just like to make one comment, too.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Very appreciative of these, and I see the results of these grants in, in my area. So, very, very glad that we're going to the junior highs with this now. I think it's going to be a, a great thing. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your vote. Votes are unanimous. Thank you, Janice, for being here and presenting it to us this morning.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our general session, and I understand we have some closed session items, council.
We, excuse me. We do, Mr. Chairman, Items E, E, and F are off agenda. I do anticipate an announcement. Announcement on a closed session today, October 12th, by Kathleen Bales Lane, County Council, in the matter of Item A on the board's closed session agenda, McKee et al. versus Tulare County Board of Supervisors, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number 10-236639. The board has voted to defend the appeal filed by the petitioners in that action on motion of Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.